Hey, good ev- good evening and welcome to Morrison County Planning Commission here. Planning Commission Public Hearing for October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Please rise for the flag pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I have a few items to cover before we get started tonight. Please sign in at the door if you have not already done so. There you'll find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we'll follow tonight. If you wish, please take, please take one. Please put any electronic devices on silent at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the, for the record. Members at a planning commission are appointed by the county board of commissioners with one member from each of the five commissioner districts. Land Service staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. The task at a planning commission is to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the county board of commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of approving a request meets the criteria for approval rest with the applicant. There's a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium over there by the door, state their name and address for the record, and give their testimony. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. After all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing portion of the process. The planning commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our finding of fact criteria as required by Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We will have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions be made. Then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or denial to the county board of commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The county board of commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny the request. So tonight, we have two agenda items. The first one is Adam and Caitlin Mueller. If they'd want to come up, sit up at the front. So they're located at one-two-one-nine-three Meadowview Drive, Little Falls. Application for an interim use permit to allow for event venue. Located in point of southwest quarter of northwest quarter, section thirteen, township one-twenty-nine, range thirty, Pike Creek Township. If you guys would please state your name for the record, and we'll talk into the microphone so we can hear.
Hi, Adam Mueller.
And Caitlin Mueller.
Okay, thank you. This time, Amy, you ready with the staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is an after-the-fact interim use permit request for limited rural business in section thirteen of Pike Creek Township. The ordinance references for this is section six oh four point eight that requires an interim use permit for limited rural businesses. And section twelve eleven point four contain the performance standards for limited rural businesses. Here's a plat map of Pike Creek Township and the red dot is the location of the property. And then here is the permit request received from the applicant. And a site drawing also provided by the applicant. And then here's an aerial photograph of the property. And then some oblique imagery as well. The, this is the home we're talking about here. The applicant owns this seventeen point three acre property with frontage on Meadowview Drive, and the property is approximately a half mile west of the city of Little Falls. The applicant requested a rezone of this parcel and their adjacent parcel to go from residential to agriculture zoning in May of two thousand and twenty-four, and that rezone was granted. The home on this property is currently licensed as a vacation rental, and the applicant has also hosted events at the home, including mystery dinner theaters and parties. The applicant requests an after-the-fact interim use permit for a limited rural business, specifically an event venue, to continue these events. The Morrison County Health and Human Services Department is aware of this request and is working with the applicant on the issuance of a special event food license that is valid for ten days. If serving food beyond the ten days catering of food is required. Let's see, that, there you go. The onsite septic system is sized for five bedrooms or ten people. This assumes full use of the home facilities. If guests are capped at forty and only use the bathroom facilities, the septic capacity is adequate. Land Services suggests a condition to keep the septic system certificate of compliance current, which would require an inspection every three years. The surrounding property is zoned agriculture and is made up of cropland, feedlots, and rural residences. Then here is a zoomed-out aerial photo with the parcel outlined in blue. And then here are the performance standards for limited rural businesses. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives and agriculture's goal A one, objective six, goal A two, objective one. And then local economic development, goal C one, objectives one and eight, goal C two, objectives one, two, seven, and nineteen. Forty-nine notices were sent and no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then here are your interim use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Amy. At this time, do applicants have anything to add, or does everything look accurate to you guys, or you have anything else to add?
That was a lot of good information, actually. Yeah, everything looked true, so yeah, it was good.
Okay. So at this time, I'd open up to the planning commission here if you, if you guys have any questions for the applicants or staff. I guess we'll open up for that.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Have you, how many events total have you run?
Um, in the past?
Today, to date, yeah, all in.
Um, you know, I actually don't have a number. I would say usually about a dozen events a year. It's, the, our, our venue or the, the home that we use is mostly used as an Airbnb. The events that we do are usually in the fall/winter when we're slow, and it's just a good way to get people through the door. It's just something we do in addition, I guess.
Have you had any emergency calls for health or rambunctious behavior?
Nope.
Have a plan for it?
Uh, not a written out plan, I guess. No, I do not.
Okay. If you say a dozen events for the, a year, how many years total have you been doing it?
Since twenty twenty-one. Uh, yeah, from twenty twenty-one.
So fifty-ish?
Yeah.
That'd be on the upper end, I would say.
Now that you say it out loud, but yeah.
Because, you know, three years, thirty-six, twelve times three is thirty-six.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm bad at math. Got it. All right.
This seemed like a lot, fifty seemed like a lot.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Half math class.
Barely, barely.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, George.
I've got several questions here. So is there going to be any employees at all, or are you going to do it all yourselves, or?
Um, okay, so I do everything on my own. I do have my daughter who helps me as needed, but usually it's just me.
Pretty much all family, then?
Yeah, yep.
And how about the township? Do they weigh in?
Um, no.
You know, it, it is a township road, and I think it's a gravel road, correct?
Yes.
If I remember correctly?
When we went to rezone it into Ag, I talked to Mr. Copa, no, 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 what's the name? I can't think of his name.
Can't either.
No, but anyways, one of the guys on our township said, go for it. He was in support of it, and he did call in support of it when we rezoned, so, for that purpose.
And then I assume most of your hours of operation are probably going to be evenings and that kind of stuff?
Yep.
Okay, and, and the way it looks by the pictures, you're pretty shielded from the neighbors. Being there are residences there and stuff, you're pretty shielded from them, so that should help disperse any noise?
We've never had any issues with any of our neighbors, and like you said, it is a very shielded property. We have plenty of parking on site, so we don't have people parked on the roads. So, yeah, it's been pretty low-key, I would say.
Yeah, and our house is one of the neighboring houses.
Oh, okay.
Yep, our property.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and then also, any signage or anything, or you don't?
So all we have right now is just a little sign on the mailbox.
Okay.
We don't have anything big.
Okay. Uh, other than that, I think, I know what, they were talking about conditioning the septic system, inspection every three years, I think that was.
Okay, yep, I wrote that down.
I think that's all, answers all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
Yeah, on that septic, when you have these event venues, do you bring an outdoor BFI, or would you use the, the existing ones on your home? And because that was part of it for three-year inspection, if you're doing that, because if I remember correctly, it's designed for ten, and obviously if you're going to have more, that amount, it's going to be overused, so what do you use when you have these events?
So I would say the events, most of the time, don't have over twenty people max, and it is zoned for forty, and it's zoned for ten as continuous living. So it's not used continuously. You know, if you have twelve events a year, you know, put, you know, twenty people, it's, you know, not as used as much as you think.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
The reason why I evaluated it for forty is because in your application, you said the most you would have would be forty at a time. And so I evaluated worst-case scenario, forty people, that the system could handle that, so that's where that number of forty came from.
Okay, so you're using your facilities that you have right now? Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Okay, I guess where are you at in our notes here in our packet to talk about working with the county, Morrison County Health and Human Services about your, your food?
Yep.
Where are you at on that?
So I've worked with her in the past, and so in, in the past, when we've done these events, I've had a food license. She came out, did the inspection and everything. And then I submit my menus to her, and she approves it. So I do not have a current food license right now because I don't have anything on my schedule right now. So usually now is the time when I'll start putting things on my calendar, and then I'll just get it pretty quick. They're pretty good about that.
So you do get your permits for?
Yes, yeah, yep. I just don't have anything on the calendar yet.
Yep, yep. Okay, so then we also need end date on this too, right, Amy? Yes, okay. So if this were to go through, so we'll put a condition on, normally on these interim use permits, we do an end date on that one, okay, because it goes with you, not the land, okay? Um, so that could be, a lot of people like to do it when you no longer own the property. Is that something?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay. So that'll be a condition, and then probably the every three-year sewer inspection.
Okay, so with that inspection, just so I know, will I get a notice that that's due, or is that something I need to keep track of?
That's going to be on you.
That's going to be on me, and then I need to submit it to the?
Yep, so when you hire? Nope, so when a septic inspection is done by law, they have to provide it to us.
Okay.
So if you hire a septic inspector, they're going to submit that to us. It's going to be up to you to make sure that you keep that current with us.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so you can, you're, you can live with that, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
That would be the case anyway if they continue to use it as a vacation rental by owner. Their licensing for that also requires that to be current, so.
No, I understand. It's just it's nice to look them in the eye, and then they look at you and say, yeah, we'll do that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have on record when the last one was done?
Yes, I'd have to look it up for you, though.
Okay, cool.
You can give us a call.
Guys, have any other questions for the applicants?
I think that's it.
Guess at this time, we'll open up this portion of the meeting to the public. If there's anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this application, please go up to the podium and speak into the microphone. We have to ask three times, so is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I did get a telephone call from Ross Womery from the township this morning. He left me a message, and I tried to call him back, and he did not answer. But he, in the message, he did say that the township did not have a problem.
Okay, thank you.
That's who I was trying to think of earlier.
Okay, thank you, Ross. Okay, any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. You guys ready to go through the criteria questions? Okay. Okay, question one, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Let's start with Marvin.
Well, first, I want to comment, you did an excellent job filling out this here. And it will not, and it, and the way, I'll read off what you wrote, and I believe this fits it very well. The events are, we host are typically for only fourteen guests and only last two to three hours, about two to four times per year. We would like to hard, host larger parties with a max of forty people, and we have plenty of onsite parking, so there'll be no cars parked on the road, and the property has its own septic and well. But, yeah, nice job of filling that out, so it will not.
Thank you, Marvin. Anybody have anything to add to question one? Okay, we'll move on to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Go to John.
Um, if it had been detrimental or impacting the use of other properties, you probably would have heard about it as they've, they've run a few of these events already, plus the applicants answer during most gatherings. Guests are indoors the entire time, smaller get-togethers, not excessive noise, plus you're on seventeen acres, surrounded by a thick tree line, which adds to the privacy and probably the sound barrier for the guests and neighbors, and they are also their own neighbors, so probably not going to call themselves in.
Yeah. Thanks, John. Anybody have anything to add to question two? Okay, we'll move on to question three. I'll take that one. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. I think it is reasonably related. We allow this type of land use in egg zoning. When we look at the groundwater, the surface water, and air quality, there's nothing, it's basically just some people coming into an indoor venue that it's not overrun, it's not like a huge population of people at one certain time. Um, yeah, you'll get maybe ten to twenty people, you know, and then it's, it's gone for five days, maybe a month before the next one's come back, so nothing's going to change. We got the sewer system that's able to carry that capacity with putting the condition on, the checking that every three years, I think that protects the groundwater. There shouldn't be anything involved with the, the structures already there as far as, we don't, as far as the air quality and the surface water shouldn't be affected, it's already existing buildings there, and we haven't had any complaints from the township or neighbors about any of that, so I would answer yes to question three. Anybody have anything to add to question three? Okay, we'll move on to question four. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. George?
Uh, yes, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the property is zoned agriculture as of May two thousand and twenty-four. Event venues are allowed in agricultural zoning with the interim use permit, and with the conditions that they have agreed to, it, it should be just fine with the zoning ordinances and the purposes of the zoning districts.
Okay, thank you, George. Anybody have anything to add to question four? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Marv, you want to do that one again?
Sure. No, it is, Marv, yes, it, it, it's not in conflict. In fact, it aligns with, with a comp plan. I mean, simple ones like goal A one ensure the county provides, protects most suitable for strong and stable agricultural industry, and not only egg, but it fits in there. It also supports, build a strong, varied local economy, provides adequate employment for opportunities. And so it aligns with a lot of, of the local egg, and also, it also, you know, is so small, and, and it's rural, so it should be fine.
Thanks, Marvin. Anybody have anything to add to question five? Okay. Before we vote, I got one question I maybe should have asked that earlier. So we're doing this now, and you weren't kind of business for a while. So just didn't know that you needed a permit, or what was the deal with that?
I did not know, yeah. I mean, I worked with the, um, uh.
Public health?
Public health, yes. I went through all that, and, and not once did it come up. I feel like I, I called in and I asked questions, and I couldn't, didn't, never got an answer. Everyone was like, sounds good. So, um, yeah, that's why I'm here now.
So now you know, and now you can tell everybody else, right?
Well, yeah, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. I just had to ask that, so.
Yep.
Okay, you guys ready for the, the vote? Okay, keep in mind, we have two conditions. One's the end date. When they no longer own the property, this permit will expire. And the other one is that they have to do a sewer inspection every three years. Okay, just keep that in mind when we're voting. Okay. Question one. The use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. George?
Yes.
Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Myself, Clint is yes. George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. George?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like all the questions were answered in affirmative, so I guess at this time, I'd take a motion to recommend approval with the conditions.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to do that with the conditions.
I'll second that motion with the conditions.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners with the two conditions. All in favor, say aye. John?
Aye.
Myself, Clint is aye. Marvin?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll rec, we'll recommend to the county board of commissioners that recommend approval on this. And that meeting is November fifth. Okay, if you have any questions between now and then, contact Amy or her staff at Land Services.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
That meeting is during the day. It's in the morning.
All right, and I do not need to be present, right?
You do not have to be present, no.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Free to go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda. Um, we have Dwayne and Rose Hoffman, if you guys will come up and sit. Dwayne and Rose Hoffman, Rev Trust, no property address, application to plot a parcel of land to allow forty-four buildable lots located in point of south half, section six, township forty-two, range twenty-eight, Richardson Township. Okay, when you get situated, if you guys would please speak into the mic and say your names for the record, please?
Gary Hoffman.
Kathleen Hoffman-Tax.
Okay, thank you. Amy, you ready with the staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a hearing for a preliminary plat and located in section six of Richardson, Richardson Township. Section fifteen hundred of the ordinance pertains to the plating of land in Morrison County. And then here's a plat map of Richardson Township, and the red dot is the location of the property. And then here is the plat request from the applicant. And then here's an aerial photograph of the property outlined in blue. So the proposed plat is on an eighty-two point seven-nine acre parcel. The property is duly zoned shoreline and residential. The areas with a shoreline designation do not have frontage on Plat Lake, but is within a thousand feet of the lake, so that's why it has that shoreline designation. So here is an aerial photograph, again, with the zoning layer turned on, so you can see a portion of this property has that shoreline designation due to its proximity to Plat Lake. The applicant, and we'll also call him the developer, is proposing a residential subdivision with forty-four buildable lots and two outlots. No lake access or shared access parcel is proposed. The outlots total two point nine, eight-nine acres and are primarily wetlands that are not capable of supporting development. They will be dedicated to the public as open and park space along with the roads that serve the subdivision. Newly developed roads will serve the entire subdivision. The roads will be dedicated to the public. Richardson Township is aware of this and has met with the developer, county engineer, and land services regarding the road specifications acceptable to the township. A developer's agreement detailing the road specifications, timeline, and bond amount will be provided at the final plat hearing. The Public Works Department is aware of this project and will oversee the construction of the roads. A turn lane is required on the north end of the plat, which is the entrance to the subdivision off of Quest Road, which is also known as County State Aid Highway fifty-one. And direct access to Quest Road on the east side of the development must be removed. No driveway entrances will be installed directly onto Quest Road. Each lot has been identified with primary and secondary septic system areas, as well as a building envelope that excludes the pockets of wetland throughout the subdivision. Developer will have declarations and covenants for the subdivision, and copies will be provided at the final plat hearing. Questions regarding the details of what is planned for these documents should be directed to the developer tonight. Drainage and utility easements are present for each lot at the side and rear lot lines and along the road frontage. The developer has engaged the services of an engineering firm to develop grading and drainage plans. Those were included in your packet, and here are copies of those. This project requires an NPDES permit, which is a National Pollution, Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, which the developer and engineer are aware of. A small portion of the project area is within the mapped flood plain. The engineer and developer are aware of this and have considered that with the grading plans. And so here is an aerial photograph of the property again with the flood plain map. So if you look down in the southern southeast end, that's where we've got some mapped flood plain. The county surveyor has reviewed the preliminary plat drawing and has worked with the developer surveyor on necessary changes. A final plat review will occur at the time of final plat application. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is residential, goal B one, objectives two, three, and goal B two, objectives one and two. And then the comprehensive water plan goals and objectives, the surface water goal, objectives B and C. Land use and development goal, objectives B and D. One hundred fifty-two notices were sent. No comment was received prior to the public hearing. Mr. Chair, this does not have a set of criteria questions. So this is very much like a rezone with the caveat that you can put conditions on this as far as, you know, we're hearing the preliminary plat, so you can make a recommendation to the county board to either, you know, approve or deny this preliminary plat, and you can also make recommendations for changes that should or ought to be made to that plat. And then you're going to hear this again in a final plat, so it'll have it in its final. And then you're going to hear this again in a final plat, so it'll have it in its final form. All of those documents that I talked about will be here for your review as well, so this is just the first step.
Okay, thank you, Amy. At this time, do the applicants have anything to add to what Amy gave on as far as, uh, the staff report, or is everything she said?
She did pretty good.
Yeah.
A lot of this will be, I would say, garages for the lake people around the country with maybe later on building into house there or something. We do have some people that are interested in building houses, houses right away. But we can't sell them yet. We can't take money down, so we're sitting here waiting yet, you know, so I can't say what they're gonna do for sure. They might go somewhere else by the time we get that far.
Yeah.
Mister Chair?
Amy, go ahead.
So I just want to clarify with the applicant. So are you essentially, um, proposing like a mixed-use development? So some residential and then some for just accessory utility use? Is that what your thought process is?
Yeah.
And are your covenants going to address some of that?
Yeah, the covenants will address, you know, vehicles sitting outside, campers sitting outside. We'd rather see them inside a building. All the lots are big enough for a house and a garage and a septic system, two of them, because you gotta have your, both of them, and a well. So, it's kind of up to the people what they want to do, I guess, when they buy it. You got anything to add to that?
Okay. I guess at this time we'll open up to the planning commission. You guys have any questions for the applicants or staff?
Mister Chair. So when you, uh, put this proposal together, did you do any type of market analysis, or was this more from the, if you, if you build it, they'll come, or is it a, like, did you have enough interest, generated enough conversations? Because forty-four plats in that specific location is, I mean, it seems like a lot.
It's not.
Oh.
No. Um, all the way to Black's Lake, people are needing places to build garages, um, to put their toys. And it's something that's been proposed to us many times over the years. This has been in CRP since nineteen eighty. So, all it's been is sitting there doing taxes and nothing else, and we decided, well, we might as well do something with it and get the public to be able to enjoy it too. So we have a snowmobile trail going along the outside edge, just like it, it used to come through kind of the middle of it. Um, that's an easement. That is, the people on the outside edge will know that that is on their property. Uh, and it'll be people that like to ride snowmobile that would buy that property, first of all. You're not gonna get, or somebody that wants to watch them, uh, because there are people that do that, just watch the snowmobiles. Uh, the two outlots. Amy said something about they were all wetland. They're not all wetland, but it wasn't big enough for the house, the garage, the sewer envelope. So, we'll make walking trail around it. Uh, I'll make a pond in the middle of the outlot B. So that people can walk their animals and enjoy it. There is trees on both of those lots, so they can walk through the trees. It's not just wide open field. Because since nineteen eighty, it's been CRP. It grew up. So... Dad died in ninety-eight, and we talked about it before he died, doing this. So, and Dad's always been, let the people enjoy the country, the land. So this is better than a pig barn or a cow barn out there with all the people, you know? What else you got?
John, you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Go ahead, George.
So, the road, so you, you, you obviously gotta build a road in there and build a road that accesses all the lots. So, and that road is gonna be built to county standards?
To township standards.
To township standards?
Yep, three township board members are sitting behind me.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
Um, when we say that the township has accepted a lesser standard, so they are, um, okay with a road width that's not standard. And they have, and our county engineer required the township to go on record saying that they are okay with that. And then also, I believe it's going to be a class five, not bituminous road. Um, but that is something that the township has agreed to, and that will be fleshed out in the developer's agreement as well.
Okay, well, that clears up a lot of things, because I was always kind of the understanding on a, on a new development in Morrison County that the road would be tarred and, you know, and...
And that's up to each individual township on what they'll accept.
Okay, okay, thank you.
On this map, if I can say something. Uh, we've got a blacktop, of course, the turn lane. Then we're gonna blacktop Claremont Street coming down. And then we'll go fifty foot either direction from there. And, uh, so that when you start out with the blade, it's easier to go. Helps that I blade roads, that I can say that.
Mister Chairman?
Go ahead, George.
I just, I guess my, I'm on the Little Falls Town Board and, and, and all our, all our developments are paved except a couple of them, and, and they're, and they're a pain in the fanny. So, the ones that aren't paved, so I guess that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, the reason why the township asked it not to be paved is that if we pave this part, the rest of the township's gonna want to be paved also. And they do not want to get into that.
Yeah, that is the theory, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm sure they'll talk here. Anything else, George?
No, I'm good.
Marvin, you have anything?
Mister Chair, um, I'm just looking at this and it, obviously, there's a lot happening here.
Oh, yes.
And I am concerned about bringing the city into the country with this large of an area. And something we're not supposed to do is spot zone. And, and, and I've just, that's just wheels that are turning here. And, uh, let the people decide, let the rest decide, and I'm just thinking about, this looks like you have a great plan laid out and everything else here, but just concerned about bringing that much out in that area, that's, that's a lot, just my, my thoughts.
Mister Chair? I'll, I'll just remind the planning commission, we're not considering a rezone. So the spot, they're not asking to rezone anything. They're working within the existing zoning districts that they've got, so I just, because spot zone is a term we use when someone's asking for a rezone. So I just wanted to make sure to clarify, you're not considering a rezone.
Okay, thank you, but just a few comments out there, so thank you.
It is eighty acres, um, so it's, it's a large area. And there's room for these without people on top of each other. So, um, it's, it's kind of a unique piece of ground. It's not hilly, it's more flat, so...
Okay, Gary, you know, it's hard, that plan, it's a great plan, it's hard sometimes to comprehend everything on it.
Yes.
What is the smallest lot that you're gonna have in there as far as square footage?
I believe it's point six-six acres.
Okay.
And there's three point five-six on some of them. Uh, but most of them are around an acre and a half, acre and a quarter.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
I think in, in one of the parts in your packet, and I don't have it on my screen, but there is a breakdown of each lot and the respective size.
I seen that, but I was a little confused by it. I just wanted to clarify that.
I don't blame you. It's a little, you gotta study it a while before you understand.
Because I did see, I did see that you had, you know, enough room to put two septic systems and all that. So that's why I was just, just curious on how big it was, that's all.
I dug a hundred and sixty-four holes by the time I got done for septic.
Okay, okay.
Mister Chair, um, uh, this was brought up, there was two point eight-nine acres per lot. Is that on average? Or how's that, because?
No, that's the biggest, bigger ones.
The biggest one, okay.
Uh, biggest one is three point something.
But I don't know why that two point eight-nine was brought up, but that was...
I believe that was a sum total of the acreage of the outlots.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so can you go through some of the covenants that you're thinking of for us?
Well, the one thing that we would like to know or make sure that don't happen is parking of old vehicles, uh, outside of a building. Or trailer houses that are older than, say, eight years old when they move in there. If they're gonna move a trailer house in, it better be a nicer one. We don't want two-by-two wall trailer houses that look like hell for lack of terminology.
Yeah.
There's no parking on the roads. Each lot is big enough they can park on their own property. When you plow snow, there's nothing worse, or blade roads, when there's cars on the road. They aggravate the heck out of you, and, uh, there's no reason to park on the roads unless they had a big party. Well, then, that would be rare an occasion, I'm sure, and it's not a big deal if they would park on the road. Uh, what else you got?
No rat catcher junk piles.
Yeah.
Basically.
Okay.
We want it to be open and accessible for the wildlife to be able to move through there. The snowmobiles to be able to enjoy the recreation. The people that are coming that will have their places there that can walk their dog for exercise or just enjoy life without having to be worried at, at someone taking a pot shot at them because they're too close or they're shooting in somebody else's yard.
Yeah.
It ends up being one point one miles of road to build.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's, like I said, a large area.
Yep.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead.
I'd like to point out, we've had a few times, uh, ones coming from different developments on covenants. Covenants don't seem to hold the whole lot. It almost has to be ordinance. Covenants are no good unless they are upheld, and we've seen it more than once come forward here, just pointing that out.
Okay, I think you're on the right track. You don't want, you want a nice surface, a nice development is what you want, okay? I think Marv's, Marv's correct on probably that statement, but I think if that's all printed out and ahead of the time when you're selling it, so people, it'll deter somebody from bringing in a thirty-year-old trailer house. After it's there, they might change, but...
Mister Chair?
Yeah.
Honestly, it'll come down to the strength of the homeowners association that gets established and their will to, um, to enforce the covenants that are there. That's really what that comes down to, because the county does not enforce covenants. So that'll be something that, that homeowners association is going to have to be diligent with.
So then, uh, moving forward, if this goes to a final one, that's when we'd be able to see all that information?
So, yes, so if this, if the county board, um, approves the preliminary, then when you see the, uh, final plat, you're going to see the full declarations, covenants, and you're going to see that developer's agreement for the roads.
Okay. I just wanted to get a little generalization on what you're thinking. It sounds like you want a nice development. You don't want just any old things, so, okay?
No, you get enough of them around the country.
Okay, then another thing busy on this, where, where's all the water gonna go?
Water's all got its own drainage. Um, I don't know if you, there is one of those maps that has the drainage on it. But there's, uh, lots of drainage in the back of the lots, in the side of the lots. And then after it is filtered, then it is, can be discharged into the wetlands.
Okay, so it's basically, they go away from the lake?
No, it doesn't go to the lake at all.
Okay, yep, that's...
There's actually, between this and Plat Lake, there's County Road Fifty-One. Water can't jump it, and there's no culverts through it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, I just wanted that on the record, so, yep. Okay.
So it looks like, Mister Chairman, it looks like you're gonna use some infiltration base, basins and that kind of stuff?
Yes.
To dump the water into, that's good?
Yes.
Okay.
Rock check dams and the ditches and...
Okay, I think we'll move on to, um, public comment, and then we'll finish up with our own questions after that. Maybe if there's something that sparked up from the public comments, so I guess at this time we'll open up to the public. Uh, if anybody in the public wants to speak to this, uh, application, please go to the, the podium, state your name for the record, and, uh, give your testimony. Any public comment?
Hello, my name is Cindy Seppleton. I'm a, not a far neighbor, not far from where this is all taking place. I'm just curious, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you guys or if it's for the town board. What's that gonna do to our taxes that are already high? That, is all this added gonna affect them or not?
Okay, we'll, uh, answer that at the end here. Thank you. Any other public comment? Be kind of nice if one of the township officials would probably come up.
Mister Chair, my name is Mark Johnson with the Township, uh, we're supervisor in Richardson Township. So we do, I did go to the preliminary meeting too with Gary and the county. And we discussed that we accept everything. Um, the reason why we did go with a shorter, smaller road width is maintenance. And, uh, we've got one road in Richardson Township with the size, with the width be proposed, they're hard to maintain, too wide. Um, as Gary said, most of the parking, we don't want on the road, so let's probably keep it off too, easier for maintenance. We did not have any plans at all to put any tar. We wanted a class five, and eventually probably dust control in there too. We spent about eighty thousand dollars a year in dust control, and this will probably be added, so we will accept this if this goes through. That will be accepted as a township road and maintained by the township too, so... Um, just kind of brought a comment to bring in the, the city of the country. There's a lot of space out there, and it's very well laid out, as you gentlemen always see. The lake shore is the city to the country already, so I think it's very well planned. Environmentally, there's not a lot of impact here either with all the work that's being done in the future for this and, uh, the county engineers involved and everybody else. So, just any questions for the board, I guess, too, for us?
Yeah, just wait one second, stay up. You guys have any questions for this township? I have none. Appreciate you coming up and speaking to, it means a little more to, to get that right from you guys, so...
Here's Michael. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I'm Mike Inslee with the Richardson Township, and we do have a right-of-way ordinance. There is no parking on our roads. We enforce it. There's nothing left in ditches. We make, if we find something in a ditch on our roads, it is picked up by the landowner. So that, that is one concern you don't need to have as far as, because this will be a township road.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing no more public comment, we'll, uh, close this portion of the meeting to the public. Um, Amy, could you answer that Cindy's question about taxes, or are you able to?
Yeah, I sure can. Uh, so the tax impact. Your, your property is valued on how you're using your own property, the condition of your property. Really not what, what's going on alongside of it. In fact, the, um, the more, uh, properties that you bring online, the more that tax burden gets distributed. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I say, then we want some more thirty-year-old trailer houses. Because if they're, if they're, uh, lower-end houses that get there, then their tax, all our taxes... Cause if they're, if they're uh, lower-end houses, I'd get there, then all our taxes will go down.
So your, your property tax is based on the value of your particular piece of property, and that's distributed amongst the, the tax base. So when there are more parcels that come online, it doesn't matter if they're developed or not, when more parcels come online, then whether it's vacant or not, that comes on the tax rolls. And then there's more distribution of the tax burden. Um, it doesn't mean that your taxes will necessarily go down, but the, wouldn't be ever since, I don't know that you would ever have, ever since that, that housing development came in, my property taxes have skyrocketed. Um, I don't know that that would be a fair, fair statement, so. Um, I think it's, probably would have minimal impact on, on your particular property valuation and, and uh, cost.
Thank you, Amy. Does the board have any other comments or questions for staffer, for the applicants?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
Just one, one last thing, so it was nineteen eighty or eighty-three, you said it was, it's been cropland since then? But it's grown up since then, which is expected?
Yeah, it was cropland before that, and then it was CRP land.
Okay.
Ever since.
Um, so CRP land since um, eighty, um, so. I haven't been good at math tonight, so forty-four years later, why, why now at this time this year? For this proposal?
It's taken out of CRP, um, cause we've been in there so many years, they said we had to be out for so many years, and then you could go back in later on. Well, as long as it's out, we might as well do something. And I was paying the taxes on it, the others. Uh, there's five of us kids in the family, that's gifted to all five of us. So I am sharing this with the other four siblings. But I've been paying the taxes on it, or we've been paying the taxes on it. So now it's time to either distribute out the taxes or do something else. And the siblings all said, well, they didn't wanna pay taxes, so it's time to do something with it.
Got it.
And people would like garages, that's the biggest thing, and then more room for houses. There's no land out there that's available for that stuff.
Okay.
The other thing is, we're putting power, uh, consolidated telephone and crowing power in here, um, to each lot. So that'll all be ready for the people. So they don't have to, one do it, the next one do it, the next one do it. It's all being put in for them. I've tried to lay it out, and this is what I've done most of my life, so.
Nope, it looks good.
Not on this big of a scale, but for residential houses and businesses and. We uh, well, I've always done dirt work for them and, and laid out stuff for them and kinda was their general contractor, even though we didn't get paid for it. But you helped them out wherever you could.
Yeah.
I used to be a sewer designer and a inspector. I uh, quit all that, cause my back was so bad that I couldn't lift the manhole covers anymore and jump in and out of the trenches and. So uh, I know a lot about that stuff. And uh, I'll help all the people through all their projects when they wanna build, so. We'll make sure that all the water is flowing the right directions and, and uh, won't let them get by with some kind of shenanigans.
Well, I appreciate that, I think what the rest of us do too, so, thank you.
Kind of the way we always were.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marvin.
As I looked through this plan and as things were, uh, questions were answered, and uh, that's a well-laid-out plan, you know, having engineer, uh, in, uh, having the county engineer, all the engineers involved, having Fester come out there and uh, survey it, knowing where the water is gonna go. You've got a, and working with the township, rather than just, uh, let's call it switballing it, and some people do some of that poor stuff and start a development, uh, without having a laid-out plan. Um, so I appreciate uh, uh, what you've done here, and it looks like you're trying to do this right. We uh, changed some ordinances earlier in uh, in what we wanted for buildable areas out in the country. I think this kinda fits in there, because if I remember correctly, that is not the best farmland there. So it would, this would be an area for building if wanted, people wanna be in an area like that. So uh, and we wanna keep top-quality farmland, being able to farm. But this being poor and how you wanna use it, I think it kinda fits in our criteria.
This is all sand too, by the way. It's, there is not a whole lot of binder there.
Yeah.
Doesn't hold the moisture, you'd have to have it irrigated pretty hard.
Okay, thank you, Marvin, just one second, George. John, did you have anything else?
Good to go.
Okay, George.
I did have one more question. So are all these lots on the septic systems, they're all gonna be good for type-one systems, is that correct? So they're not gonna be forty-four variances that we gotta deal with?
Go ahead, Amy.
So when, when we're doing uh, Minnesota Statute five oh five plat, that is a, a requirement that they have two sites for type-one systems. When we were working with, with the applicants, uh, we also then, our septic staff went out and did those soil borings with the designer. So we have verified all of those soils as well, so we will not have uh, any of those issues with any of these sites.
Perfect, you know, we like variances.
We've put a lot into this. Last September is when I started really getting into this part. But for ten years, I've driven that property and kept looking at it and saying, this would work here, that would work there. We can make the water go this way. So it's not just a spur of the moment, let's jump in it and do it.
So my comment before we vote on this is, um, I would just, when we get into the lake shore and there's lakes around there and that atmosphere, um. I think this development where it's at with uh, the, the soil types and the way the water's gonna be generated, um, totally away from the lake, um, I think this is probably an up and up. When you look at uh, the use of that lake, it's still gonna, it's gonna produce more use for the lake, but it's not gonna have as big a, impact as if they were right on the lake, okay? So I think uh, somebody wanting to put in a development like this on that kind of a soil type, where we read through our packet and look through all the, the, the soil types, um, the water drainage, all them things. The size of the lots and all them things, I think this is a great fit for um, not only that area, but for the county to add some housing, some storage, some things like that, so. Um, I would just encourage that you think a little bit more about your covenants. Um, you guys seem that you wanna have uh, something that's gonna be not just a, it'll be a nicer development, okay? So um, think about that moving forward and see, once the commissioners go through this and see what they uh, well, we'll see what happens tonight here, I guess, but um, just something to think about is that, um. But I do think that this uh, fits very nicely in the area, not only the area, but also the county, so. It's just hard when we find, it's hard to find a piece of property like that that you can actually build. There's only a couple little spots and you're gonna use them for your recreational areas, so. I think that, that's a, that's a, in that area, it's hard to find land like that to build that much stuff in.
Within a mile and a half of there, um, Lax Health System has a, uh.
Clinic.
Clinic. So there's that, we have the first responders out there, um, which do a wonderful job. There's a couple of them that live pretty close to there, so. We're set up, I think, pretty good.
Okay. Amy, just one question for you. So we can, if we add some conditions, we could put them on now. Let's say this would move forward and go to a final plat, can we do the conditions then?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we, we try to catch them.
Yep.
At the preliminary plat stage. Um, because that way then, when the final plat uh, comes, that, that's really when you're looking at that in, in its most final version, so if there's something glaring now, that's when you would wanna be tasking the applicant with that, um, because then they would incorporate that change for you to see in the final plat. But yes, if there's something crazy, um, that comes up, then ye- yes, you can.
I, I don't have one, I just wanted to ask if there's a safety net in case something, that's what I was asking. You guys have anything that draws your attentions or?
Well, I guess, you know, I, I would just ask Gary, you know, I guess, really, uh, on the mobile home thing. I guess, really, really look at that one hard, I guess.
Well, we are open to suggestions. We are not, nothing written in stone now.
Myself personally, I guess.
You guys see more than we do.
Myself personally, I guess, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't probably allow mobile homes in there.
No single wides?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think I would. Unless they were gonna be a double wide on a foundation, so they look like a regular home, you know, I guess, that's just my opinion.
That's more than fine with us. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all.
We, we can't, we can't condition the type of home, so that would have to be borne out in a covenant.
Well, we can covenant that, I mean, that doesn't bother me a bit. Cause that'll bring maybe a different. Lack of words again, uh.
Demographic?
Something like that.
Okay. Anybody have anything else, otherwise we can uh, probably go to the vote, huh? Okay. So this is just a straight-up yes or no vote? Okay. George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Okay, so I guess I'd take a motion to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion.
And I'll second that. Motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners. All in favor, say aye. John?
Aye.
Myself is aye, Marvin.
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll recommend approval to the county board of commissioners. And they'll uh, review this and decide, make their decision on November fifth, okay? So if you have anything between now and November fifth that you, questions or got something comes up, give Amy or her staff a call and they'll walk you through it.
And I encourage you to keep on working with your township, that, keep it ground level, and they're the ones that take care of it, so, thank you.
Okay, you're free to go, thank you, good luck.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so now we have.
Motion to adjourn, we have other agenda items? There are other agenda items? How did that go? It's funny, it's still funny.
Okay, so now we'll look for a motion to approve our minutes from October fifteenth?
I'll make the first motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion's made and seconded and approved October fifteenth minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Okay, minutes are approved, any new business?
Maybe if you wanna ask them to step out?
Okay. Um. You guys in the back, could you please go out, could you go out in the hall? Please go out in the hall so we can finish here, thank you very much.
Uh, new business, uh, just to let you know, I, I did send you out all the cannabis stuff. What I really need you to concentrate on is, I gave it all to you so you could see the full cannabis picture. But the only, the ordinance that you're gonna see is the land use one, not the registration ordinance. So don't spend too much time picking apart the registration ordinance, because that's a Health and Human Services ordinance, that'll be administered by them. Uh, the zoning ordinance is the one that you're going to see, but I wanted you to see the full picture of cannabis. Uh, so Nate from Health and Human Services and I presented those uh, drafts to the county board today. Um, really didn't have any tweaks on the zoning portion of it, they had some tweaks on the res, the registration part of it. So um, on the twenty-sixth of November is when we're gonna be hearing the ordinance amendment to incorporate the cannabis businesses into the zoning ordinance. On December third is when the county board will hold the public hearing for the registration ordinance. And then on December seventeenth is when they will consider both ordinances and will adopt, ultimately adopt them. So just so you know kinda where we're at with that. If you have any questions, uh, specifically about any of those, let me know. But a lot of the language is really dictated by statute and the framework that we need to work within. We don't have a ton of leeway, we can't just outright prohibit any, any of it, so uh, and, and the board is clear on that as well, so anyway, uh, that is coming up. Um, I haven't gotten a lot of feedback from residences. We're still trying to get the cities and the townships to indicate what they're going to do. Uh, so we can enter into the necessary agreements with them for the registration delegation, if they choose to do that. Um, so, yeah, I think that's.
That was rather interesting when we, George, Clint and I were down at St. Cloud.
Yeah.
They, they covered that quite well, and just like, the language is just like, it was already dictated, you couldn't.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot, it, I think actually the biggest thing is, is uh, the cities and the townships, because uh, the counties, this, we kinda do this all the time. You know, we'll have something handed down from the state, and we incorporate it and we move on. Uh, with, with cities and townships, this is a little bit more impactful and requires a little bit of thought on their ends to figure out how they wanna handle that.
So, so just, just so does everybody here, that when we hold that public hearing.
Yes.
We're not gonna be changing anything, if we have questions, ask questions.
If you have questions, I will tell you if it's something that we have a little bit of leeway on. Um, and if it's not, I'll tell you that. Uh, but I think the, actually the zoning part of this is pretty darn straightforward, because really what we look at that is, is we're just, we're incorporating twelve more uses into the ordinance and determining where in the county they're most appropriate. Really, that's what we're doing from the zoning standpoint.
The public understands that these are already dictated, and you can't do a whole lot from that.
Yeah, and I think that that, that's, that's certainly understood by the county.
Yeah.
Board, and that message is given to anyone that inquires, but we haven't had a whole lot of, of questions about it all that much, so anyway, that is.
I just want everybody just to be aware that we're not gonna be having a public hearing and trying to make conditions and do all that kinda stuff, it's all laid out, so research it. If public's here, we'll listen to them. If there, you got a question on it, please ask, but we don't need to have a lengthy discussion and figuring it all out because it's out of our hands anyways, really.
And also, all of the documents that you received, I do have, we have a dedicated cannabis page on our website, and all of that is posted, so anyone from the public can view all of the documents now. So we've tried to be as transparent as we possibly can with this. Um, we did not uh, form a stakeholder group or anything, because it is so rigid.
Yeah.
Um, this really, we can't incorporate a lot of public input into those standards, so. Anyway, I think that's, for coming up, that's kinda new and different. Uh, that's what we've got, but I think it's, it's on track and will be A-OK.
Okay, so that, that's not the next meeting, it's a meeting after that?
That's correct.
When do you need response from the townships?
We were asking by the end of October, that we have that.
That's like today.
And Matt, Matt has been spearheading that, he's been communicating with the cities and the townships.
We have a meeting on Monday night, so.
Yeah, so.
I'll make sure I push on that a little bit down.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think that's all I have.
Okay, any old business?
I don't have any.
Okay, so I take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded and adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at uh, seven twelve.